Are you ready? Call the meeting to order. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the record, board member Carly Ryder is on Zoom with us today and board member Tulkey is absent. Well, we didn't have anyone signing up to address the board today, Vicky? Thank you. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the October 7th, 2020 meeting. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
A motion by board member Baker, second by board member Parker. I'll do roll call vote since we have one calling in via Zoom. Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Thank you. Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
And board member Nicholson, aye. We'll move, the minutes are approved. We'll move to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion in a second. I'll do, board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
Board member Nicholson, aye. The agenda is approved. There were no new conflicts of interest presented. I'll move to items seven A through C, the approval of the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion as second. Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
Board member Nicholson, aye. The consent agenda is approved. Now on to the reports. The president, first we have the first quarter finance report. Is your mic not on? I can't.
I mumble anyway, is that better? I, President Nicholson, members of the board, just a few brief points on first quarter financials. Wanted to draw to your attention and speak to. So as we go through these, the first one that we're looking at is our cash balances and this is as of September 30th. So obviously there's a little lag time on it. One thing I always like to point out, especially this time of year, there's always a lagging effect related to these cash. So if you looked at the other consent agenda item, there was a trust and agency report. And if you notice, between our EFT account and our tuition and fees account, there's close to $7 million in there. So that money has probably already made, majority of it's already made its way down here and will be reflected in the next month's report. So just as an awareness, our cash position is much better than the 1.8 million in that post-secondary fund that's reflected on these statements of cash balances. Second thing I want to draw your attention to is we look at the post-secondary fund. This is always, again, one of those timing differences. So when you look at this year compared to last year, it looks like, wow, we're really going gangbusters. We're way ahead in our tuition and fees revenue. But again, that's a timing difference. The billing, when those charges actually close to a student's account fell into August this year. That's why it shows up in the September report. Prior year would have been in September and been to the August report. So you're going to see quite a bit of difference when you compare a year to year on the revenue side. But a couple of things to point out, when we look at those tuition and fees, and granted, this is very early, this is almost at the billing date. So we're not going to get some of that shrink and melt. That'll show up in our next report. So don't necessarily speak on the August or October report, excuse me, but would want you to point out, make sure and take a look at that and see how those percentages may move a little bit. But, you know, clearly our revenue stream isn't 51% at so far this year. Put this all out because we have a summer term as well. So we know we're going to see some shrink. We know we're down a little bit from where our budget is. But as you look at this report, it is in a positive position on the tuition and fees components of it. On the expenditure side, just a couple of things. And again, this really has to do with a kind of a timing thing. There's elements of our expenditures that are cyclical in nature. There are elements of it that are not. It's periodic, but when does it fit? When does it happen? So a couple of things you'll see in here, when you look at the resale items, there's two elements to that. The major one is the fact that, again, we moved the laptops and talked about this number of time from the bookstore fund into the post-secondary fund. So we're out ahead of the year buying those laptops for resale because we're selling them in August. So you see that number jump up a little bit. The non-capital equipment, which is a couple line items above it when you compare last year to this year, there's quite a bit more of it. But that's one of those things that's periodic. As what the budget defines or as people are able to get in and get quotes on those non-capital items, which are kind of that stuff that falls in that $1,000 to about $5,000 range of unicost, they have a multiple year life. So they're not depreciable assets, but there's still equipment that has a durable life. And that tends to vary year to year, not only in the budget, but also in the timing of the expenditure. Bad debt, as we tend to look at that, and we always see that when you get down into the bad debt column here. And it's always kind of negative at the first part of the year. You see that again last year. We're going to continue to evaluate it this year. The Obligation Recovery Center and that agreement that the Board of Technical Education entered into with them a couple of years ago has really had a positive impact on our bad debt. There's a little more of a hammer there in terms of loss of some privileges that tends to incentivize students to pay those balances off. May also see what you see maybe some of those terminations or that shrink earlier in the session because they're starting to get out earlier and not carrying that into that ORC situation. So those are kind of the highlights related to the post-secondary fund. Bookstore fund, again, is a condition of the students that we have. You'll see the sales, you know, looks fairly comparable, but they are going to be actually in overall respect are probably up a little bit in the sense that laptop sales. So you look at this, and now actually this is pretty comparable now that I think about it. This is books to books because of the timing difference. Laptops would have showed up in the next month. So I think this is a book to book sale. Laptops will show up next month as well. So anyway, we're very comparable on the book side of it. Sales to the students, when you get down into the resale item, you see a little bit of a change there. But again, this is a factor of what kind of inventory he carries as he heads into the semester, the timing of when we pay those bills. So overall, no surprises on the bookstore. The two, and our other enterprise funds, when we look at the food service fund and the childcare fund, I think one of the things that we're seeing when you compare last year to this year really has to do with our modality in our delivery of courses. When we gone to some hybrid delivery and some online delivery, the demands for those childcare services on campus are reduced. So you're seeing that reflection in the revenue stream. And we see the same thing in the food service fund. We see it about being half of what it was the prior year. So I think that's a byproduct of the way we're delivering services to be able to keep doing it on campus by separating that and delivering one day and maybe online another day. So we're seeing those impacts as well. Childcare centers, she's working hard trying to staffing that correct. That's been a little bit of a challenge as well, given the COVID situation, trying to keep everybody safe. Food service fund, you'll see us being a little bit down on our supplies for resale. Obviously, if our food sales are down, what we're buying to resale is going to be down a little bit. Manager of that is also working hard on the staffing to right-size that, given the demands that we're having. So we're making adjustments there as we go. Long-term, both of these enterprise funds may be eligible for some reimbursement under the CARES Act on the lost revenue component. Childcare is really easy to prove. I mean, when you look at last year to this year, it becomes very obvious that there's a loss of revenue associated with COVID-19. Food service, a little more challenge. Yeah, you can see the loss of revenue, but we also incurred less in expenses too. So as we continue to distribute funds and start to look at how we can allocate our matching share, reimbursing ourselves from some of the PPE expenses that we've incurred so far, some of these lost revenues will be an opportunity for reimbursement as well. And I think I talked about that when I did the year-end wrap-up. Especially in the corporate ad, there's some room there too. So very high-level approach of as we're kicking off the year and into our first quarter. So more than happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Thank you, Rich. I just think it'd be great maybe if your team and Dr. Stavum and Dan Conrad and the principal at Jefferson High School might be thinking with the childcare center and the food services. There might be some great opportunities with the new high school, with students and/or staff with the childcare center and food services, since there's not much out in that area anyway for the students and staff that maybe could partner on that for.
Yeah, we serve quite a few Sioux Falls school district staff already. Clearly, they are a more favored staff in the sense that their schedule is more of a full load than when our students are intermittent in it. So yeah, if we can.
With location and proximity, I think it will just be used much more.
We saw some with New Tech High coming on, clearly some with CTE. So we're starting to see an increase in that mix of more full times. And that's really what's needed to keep that operation viable. We need to have a stronger mix of, you know, the full-time type of childcare situation, at least throughout the school year.
Yeah, so I think meeting with them and seeing what their needs are and what possible partnerships could be would be great. Any other questions for Rich? Seeing none, do I have a motion to acknowledge the first quarter finance report?
So moved, second.
I have a motion as second. Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
And board member Nicholson, aye. The acknowledgement is approved. We'll go to the FY '20 strategic plan update report. Thank you, Rich.
Good afternoon, President Nicholson, members of the board, Dr. Stavum. Thank you for the opportunity to present this afternoon. I'm going to talk to you about an update, our annual report to our strategic plan. The plan was adopted in 2016. And each year, we provide the school board, the tech council, a brief overview of some of the highlights of that report. The main report itself will be found under the My Tech inside the Southeast Tech portal. So if you want to review the eighty-some pages of the annual report, it'll be there. I'm just going to cover a few slides this afternoon here, if I can. A couple of the main points that we definitely want to bring to your intention, they're sort of metrics on our student success. Of course, our overall goal is to accomplish our mission. And our mission, to summarize, is to meet the workforce needs of the region. So the whole idea behind developing a strategic plan is to place elements in that plan that help us drive toward accomplishment of that mission. And I think last year was a good year overall for us. So I'll be reporting out on FY '20, which is, of course, the fall '19, spring '20 academic year. But when we first start off in this first slide with student retention and student success, a quick note, if you remember from past years, the color indicators are on some of the slides because the data has been finalized. And on some of the slides, the data, for instance, in this slide FY '20, doesn't have a color associated with it because the numbers were just finalized this week before we presented here. But yellow, or I should start with red, means we're below the metric, the target. So if you look on the slide, you have an R and a T. The R is the result and the T is the target. So if we're below that target, it's red. If we're within striking range of that target, it's yellow. And if we meet or exceed that target range, it's green. So as far as retention, the good news is that our retention rate for FY '20 actually increased from the previous year to 70%. And so this is a, this retention number though, I want to highlight, it's focused on new students to Southeast Tech. So these are first-time, full-time students. So I think what they kind of call in the IPAD's data world as the true retention rate for first-time, full-time. The state also has some retention numbers that we will be presenting to the state legislature in a few months here, a few weeks, actually, I guess now. And those numbers are more comprehensive. Those include not only first-time, full-time, but every student and part-time students and so forth. So you may see a slight difference, although our numbers correlate quite strongly between the two sets of numbers. So the good news again, last year, our retention increased to 72%, which would be green, of course, and 6% since FY '16. So we've seen some nice increases and that has everything to do with the work of our faculty and our student success advisors and staff and so forth and helping those students be successful. One of the concerns though, I would have to say for this year, is the impact of COVID and how that's going to impact us and how we go into spring. And our numbers are looking, I think right now, retention-wise, we've had some drops, which you normally have, but it's something we're closely monitoring. It's been a little bit more challenging because the classes are not only face-to-face, they're hybrid now. And so there's a tendency for some students to maybe not show up and fall further behind. So our faculty have been working very hard. I know Benjamin Valdez and his team have been meeting. And we have a lot of CARES alerts. If you remember, if a student, a CARES alert can be filed by a faculty member, by a student success counselor, really anyone on campus on behalf of a student. And then that student success counselor will contact that student to see how they're doing, alert their faculty and so forth. So hopefully, all those things will help us maintain a strong retention number. Another, on this slide also, is one thing to point out as we did increase our number of associate diploma and certificate awards this past year over last year. We had 949 awards over the previous, 930 or some from the previous year. So it's nice to see that number continuing going up. And you see that in each of the corresponding years in the first chart. A quick facility update, of course, you were all out on campus just a few weeks ago. And on some of those facility improvements, our Wood Center, which would be the Vet Tech program, that's nearing completion. We've been informed that that's in December, early December. We are hoping, fingers crossed, that we'll be into the labs. The good news is that at least this first semester, those labs are not essential for the program, but they will be the second semester. So it's really critical that that work gets finished up. The dental assisting remodel is finished. Those students are in, working on the labs. The good news there is that the state board of dentistry approved our request for accreditation. So students graduating from our program this year will be considered registered dental assistants at the end of that program. The TC parking lot was completed, the work there. I believe that was the northwest portion of the parking lot was, southwest portion was resurfaced and finished. And then the Terry Avenue expansion is behind us, nearing completion as well. Some work to be done there. Technology improvements on campus, a big one for academics was adoption of, of course, syllabi software. So there's consistency between syllabi with all faculty, full-time and part-time, which is absolutely critical. Another piece that has really helped us out recently is the Crisis Go app. And that's one of our emergency notifications. We still have Blackboard Connect, which contacts students via telephone and email and text message. But we also, in addition to that, are using Crisis Go for all of our employees. And we've had two instances that I can think of, one last spring and one just last week, where an employee hit the alert message. And there was, fortunately, in both instances, they were faulty sensors for fire alarms. But what was advantageous is, I think, as soon as that fire alarm went off, an employee, you know, sent us the message so senior leadership was aware. And we were, you know, following up on it immediately, which is really important in any type of emergency there. And the last piece, the Microsoft Teams software. We have used this ever since, I think, especially the use has expanded with COVID. And we ended up teaching some of the classes last spring. Over the summer, we were completely online. And again, Microsoft Teams was a great way for our faculty to stay in contact with students in a hybrid approach and assisting with their online courses as well. We've continued to use Microsoft Teams for meetings. I think now it's become part of our infrastructure, I would say. So it really has been a very useful tool for us. And again, I should have mentioned, if you have any questions as I go through some of these slides, certainly be free to ask. Another metric that we obviously track closely is enrollment. And the good news is, again, last year, our enrollment was up 8.3%. We kind of forget about that with COVID, but we had a very strong enrollment last fall and last spring. And it was a steady increase since about 12% since FY '16, which is really nice to see. Our new students to Southeast Tech was about 200 students over the target range of 1,000 students, which was great. I think we can attribute some of that to some of the new programs that were developed and also expansion of dual credit opportunities. And then new program students only, there again, we were only four students below the mark. So I would almost equate that to hitting that mark as well. And that is directly due to new programming that was adopted through the last year. And then our Sioux Falls High School graduate enrollments fell by nine students in comparison with 2019. So not much of a decline there, but a slight decline. Another piece that we track closely, obviously, is the dual credit. We would love to have more of those students pursuing pathways, you know, not only to Southeast, but continuing on to post-secondary. And some of these numbers, just to highlight here, the FY '20 dual credit number jumped extremely high. So if you look at that first line in this chart, it's interesting. You look at FY '17 at 370 and then FY '18, 423. But then it dropped pretty significantly down to 361. And if you remember, that was when learners to leaders, you know, went away. We lost funding from Smithfield. And but fortunately, last year FY '20, the considerable jump was in large measure to the help of many of our sponsors. Sanford, Avera, you know, partnering with the Sioux Falls School District on the Avera Academy and the Sanford Classrooms to Careers Program with the city of Sioux Falls and First Premier. So with all those programs, the numbers rebounded quite nicely in terms of dual credit, and we hope to maintain that number. Although we know because of COVID, that number fell for FY '21. Another metric, we track our relationships to meet the needs of the region, the workforce needs of the region. We need to be in close communication and hopefully developing strong relationships with industry throughout the region. And some metrics that we track here, Paula Hawks is our career services coordinator. And she's done a great job building that area. And you can see some of the numbers again for FY '20 increasing quite strongly with participation increasing in terms of the number of career connection companies that are immediately using our job bank to notify students of the opportunity of employment. And then also the number of our student members increased 17% over the previous year, which is a number and a nice increase. We'd like to keep that going. The number of job postings declined, but again, that decline, actually, if you look hard at the numbers, it, they dropped after March of last spring. And that is in direct relation to COVID. So I think that would be a clean, green slate if it had not been for COVID across the board there. A couple of other items to point out in terms of the growth of our programs. We've had a number of new programs that have been added as a result of the good work within our academic affairs area. Dr. Valdez and his team, obviously, some of the programs that we've had more recently. An FY '20 and medical assistant diploma program was brought onboard. The agribusiness option, which was an emphasis area, started. And then six certificates that were started to provide students that access, again, to training that they could then, after they finish that certificate, go into industry or. go into industry or continue on in pursuing some of our programs. That trend is continuing to get into this fall with Vet Tech program launching, with dental assisting launching, with Paramedic Science proposed to launch in January. We're still waiting for a higher learning commission approval with that, so that may be delayed a bit. And then just today, we had a meeting with the presidents on the state tech board about some new programs we're looking at, a respiratory therapy program that Avera would like to see us bring forward. Sanford has joined in on that as well as expanding our medical assisting program to Huron. So lots of activity on the academic side of the house, which is great to see. I think we need to continue to be consulting with industry to try to not only bring new programs in, but keep certain that our current programs are meeting current industry needs as those needs change. Another important metric, the number of minority students, and obviously, this is a growing area, it's part of the community of Sioux Falls. And so within that metric, we reached our target in FY '20, a nice increase, again, over the previous year in terms of the number of minority students on campus. That number increased in FY '21 again for us, but the minority retention, and that's an area we've talked a little bit with you about, and we have been talking with some of, with members of our foundation and some of our donors about some initiatives that we'd like to specifically launch, Southeast Tech first being one of those to help us improve that retention number. So there are going to be many different pieces to that, but we will save that for a different presentation, and I'd like to have those individuals that are directly involved with that effort come back and speak with you on some of those initiatives. And then lastly here, our foundation, a couple of items just to note here, a very, very nice increase from FY '19 to FY '20 in terms of the number of scholarships that were awarded over the previous year, an increase, 110% increase. Part of that was due in large measure to money that Build Dakota, each year in Build Dakota, we're awarded an allocation, and we do our best to try to make certain we're spending down that allocation, but each year, there are some students that decide not to attend Southeast or maybe change their minds over the summer, and those dollars are just carryforward. So last year, we were able to take a lot of the carryforward from four years and then spend that down and offer a number of additional scholarships, so that's why you see, I think, the significant increase in the number of scholarships awarded last year. And the last slide is the capital campaign, and Stephen Williamson is here, and Steve, I don't know if you'd like to talk to the board about this, just real quickly. The 3.2 was our metric that we have used for a number of years in terms of fundraising efforts, and an incredible jump from 3.2 to growing the capital campaign to $8.8 million. And the result, or the reason that happened was a lot of Stephen's good work and the foundation board amended the capital campaign to include fundraising such as Build Dakota sponsorships and scholarships attributed to Build Dakota, which we had not previously included within this number, and then also in-kind contributions and pledges as well. So it's more of an all-encompassing number related to the foundation and our fundraising So I think that concludes the presentation, at least in relation to the strategic plan. One thing I did want to mention as well, and we were very fortunate that the legislature last year went forward with the name change from Southeast Technical Institute to Southeast Technical College, and even though our name changed, our mission, our focus on workforce development and meeting the workforce needs of the region have not changed. So we would like to bring that mission back to you to be reaffirmed from the board. So at this time, I guess I would ask if you had any questions related to the strategic plan, and I can try to answer some of those, and then we'll get to acknowledging, hopefully acknowledging the strategic plan and the report and approving the plan. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you and your entire team at Southeast Tech, the, you know, the ability to have students and the retention and the work that Stephen has done with the foundation are outstanding during this era of COVID. You know, we've seen in the paper, the drop in the regentals system in our state, you know, we've seen loss of students in many of our public schools in the state of South Dakota. So for you to be, you know, basically holding your own is amazing, so thank you so much for all the work you guys have done there to do this and for being responsive to the workforce needs of our community, because it's obviously, it's paying off, so thank you for all that work.
Yeah, thank you. It's a lot of effort, and there are a lot of pieces to make that happen, obviously, but I think the strategic plan report, again, some of those metrics evaluate year-to-year where we are and where we still have ways to go on some of those areas, which I think is important to also highlight and will steer more of our direction as we move forward and hopefully more partnering with the district to help us accomplish some of those objectives.
Any other questions for Bob, Carly, or the board members? Seeing none, I'm going to combine it all into one motion to vote, if that's okay. We'll acknowledge the strategic plan FY '20 update, approve the strategic plan continuation for FY '21, and approve the continuation of the mission for the FY '21.
If we could have the mission as a separate acknowledgement and motion, I think for HLC purposes, that's helpful to have it recorded separately as items of evidence for our assurance argument as well.
Okay, first, we'll do the acknowledge the strategic plan FY '20 update and approve the strategic plan continuation for FY '21. Do I have a motion to acknowledge and approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second. I'll do roll call. Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
And board member Mickelson, aye. It's approved. Now on to approval of the continuation of the mission for FY '21. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Parker, aye. And board member Mickelson, aye. It is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else before I ask for a motion to move to executive session?
Thank you for hosting us all a few weeks ago. Just getting to be there and getting to see the growth specific to the health center area was just quite remarkable, and the stimulation that surrounds the student learning is remarkable, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I hope we can do more of that in the future.
That'd be great. I have a motion, or do I have a motion to move into executive session per SDCL 1-25-2 per M3?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion second. Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Mm-hmm.
Board member Parker, sorry about that. And board member Mickelson, aye. We will move into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.